We'll call the order of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge. We'll jump into our Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Fahey.
President.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, January seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and B being a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of amended property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do we have a motion and second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions. Resolution C, which could include a German as well.
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
That concludes Board of Equalization. We'll next jump into the Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent. Commissioner Fahey.
President.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First, we have the approval of the minutes of the Board Corrections meeting held Tuesday, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do we have a motion and second?
Second.
Motion by Roger, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our report from the Director of Corrections, Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And welcome, Commissioner Fahey. Before you, you have my report for December. Turning to enclosure number one, Administrative Services and Personnel. After the sixth month of the fiscal year, we were one million, four hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and ten dollars under budget. One hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars were spent on overtime costs, which is a decrease of nearly eighty-four thousand from the previous month. And if memory serves, it was a ninety thousand dollar decrease from the previous month, so nearly one hundred and eighty thousand dollars down in two months. The three thousand, six hundred and forty-six hours of overtime in December is among an all-time modern era low. Correctional officers only averaged approximately two hours of overtime per week. Nine hundred thousand dollars in bond payments were processed by our Records Division. Four officers below the rank of Sergeant left employment in December. Two officers were promoted from Correctional Officer One to Correctional Officer Two. And as of December thirty-first, we were one hundred and one percent staffed among all Correctional Officer ranks. I want to congratulate Frank Felner on his promotion to Sergeant. And I would like to also congratulate Jesse Torres, who was promoted to Lieutenant. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of eleven individuals in Community Corrections, which saved thirty-eight jail bed days. Work release admitted fifteen individuals and house arrest admitted thirty-two. We did see those numbers dip, which oftentimes happens in December. RAP admitted fourteen individuals, however, three individuals achieved GED. Reentry Services and Therapeutic Communities in the jail. There were sixty-two individuals admitted to therapeutic community housing units. There are currently one hundred and fourteen individuals on the GED waitlist with fifty active students. Two individuals in the jail achieved GED. Twenty-four individuals were referred to our Intensive Outpatient Treatment Plan, or IOP, or, excuse me, Intensive Outpatient Treatment Program, I should say, or IOP. And a women's IOP program began in December, which had eight participants. And to give you a little background, we've had an intensive outpatient treatment program for substance use and mental illness co-occurring in Community Corrections for several years now. About a, close to a year ago, we started one in the jail. Everything we do in the jail, we have to do twice compared to Community Corrections because we're unable to mix genders. So, and it was really a matter of staffing. This is a program operated by the Community Mental Health Center. They have overcome staffing challenges so that they were able to start the women's program, so that's good news. So that program began in December, and by the end of the month, had eight participants. And thirty-two individuals received substance use disorder evaluations. There were two hundred and thirty-eight individuals placed on pre-trial release. Over the course of the month, one thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven individuals were supervised on pre-trial release. Five hundred and thirty-seven individuals participated in the twenty-four-seven sobriety condition. One hundred and fifty-six individuals were supervised via GPS monitors. That theoretically saved three thousand, six hundred and ten jail bed days. That potentially saved Douglas County six hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars in detention costs. Law library usage on the tablet system continues to demonstrate increased access with cost efficiencies for Douglas County. Enclosure number three, Compliance. Regular reporting of all compliance-related data continues. Our next audit that we will participate in will be conducted by the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, which will occur this year with dates to be determined. Enclosure number four, Population. There were one thousand, two hundred and seventy-two admissions, and there were one thousand, two hundred and fifty releases. The high count was nine hundred and seventy-eight. The low count was nine hundred and fourteen. Commissioners, I'm going to venture a guess that that is the lowest number since the jail was expanded in two thousand and five. We, I've asked people, I have seventeen years of tenure in Corrections, and I've asked people who've been there longer if they can remember a lower number, and nobody so far has been able to say that they have. The average daily population was nine hundred and forty-four, again, a record low for a second consecutive month, at least a modern era record low, I'll qualify that. The average length of stay for inmates released in December was twenty, the overall average length of stay was twenty-five days. However, forty-nine percent of inmates stayed longer than seventy-two hours, and their length of stay was forty-nine days. Fifty-one percent of inmates were released within seventy-two hours of being booked, and their average length of stay was one point four days. There were ninety-eight custodial sanctioned bed days. The U.S. Marshal population decreased. The felony pre-trial population was six hundred and sixty-five. That was a slight increase. The average daily misdemeanor population was one hundred and eighteen. That was a decrease. Probation violations remain stable. Twenty-one percent of our population were between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four. Sixty-six percent of our population were minorities. And fourteen percent of our population were female, which is, continues a mild downward trend we've seen in recent months. And seventeen percent of our population are homeless or nearly homeless, homeless, and that is also a modest decrease. Enclosure number five, Medical and Mental Health. There were seven hundred and forty-seven intake screenings and three hundred and seventy-six health and physical assessments. There were thirteen emergency medical care transports. Two of those were by nine-one-one. There were four hospital admissions, and there were a total of seventeen days of hospitalization. Off-site specialty appointments have continued to decrease. Sixteen was the number. We've seen, that's a good trend for us. That Wexford seems to use more, bring more resources onsite than our previous vendor did, and so that saves us money, and it's also a security benefit when we don't have to transport those people out to the community for those specialty appointments as often. There were one hundred and twenty-two initial psychiatric assessments, or two hundred and sixty-eight initial mental health assessments. Eighty-seven individuals were placed on suicide precautions. There were one hundred and ninety-three individuals placed on drug and alcohol detox protocols. We had four individuals who were approved by the Board of Mental Health. There are fourteen individuals on the waitlist for the Lincoln Regional Center, and there are currently fourteen individuals at the Lincoln Regional Center. We have seen the waitlist at the Regional Center creep back up the last few months. A few months back, they opened up more beds, and so we saw, you know, a rush of people go there. There was a time we only had four people on our list waiting. Now that those beds have been filled, you know, we're still in a better position than we were a year ago by a long shot, but people are waiting a little bit longer now that those beds have been filled, and they have to wait for them to open one at a time. Enclosure number six, Security Operations and Honor Guard. Our crisis negotiation team was, had a very busy month. They were deployed eighteen times in December. Their issue, the issues addressed included working with several mentally individuals who had been refusing basic hygienic care to take showers. Assisting a mentally individual who did not want to be released from custody, negotiating with an individual who was refusing to transfer to another facility, and working with an individual who was refusing to attend court. And we helped, and they were helping three individuals who were threatening to engage in self-harm behavior. Many of these deployments were in conjunction with our CERT or our Correctional Emergency Response Team. CERT was deployed ten times in December, all but one of them were in conjunction with C and T. The one, that one being a cell extraction for an individual who was refusing to attend court. We had twenty-three CERT team members participate in training relating to high-risk transports. There were eleven searches conducted. Minor contraband recovered included modified items for tattooing and nuisance items such as extra linen. Significant contraband included cash app information, notes that alluded to a presence of a cellphone. However, a thorough search of the housing unit did not produce a cellphone. A liquid resembling homemade alcohol was discovered under an inmate bunk. And our Honor Guard was not deployed in December. And enclosure number seven, Staff Development, Wellness, and Retention. There were thirty-one individuals interviewed for correctional officer positions. There were one hundred and one applications that were received for correctional officers. It's actually a class of twenty officers that actually did already begin our academy This, our Wellness and Retention Coordinator provided me some, and our training provided me some twenty-twenty-four statistics. Four hundred and six staff members completed twenty-four hours of training in strategic, in the Strategic Inmate Management Operational Philosophy. Two hundred and fifty-seven received verbal judo, which is our de-escalation training. One hundred and fifty-seven received mental health first aid training. And all of our staff were certified or recertified in self-defense or our PPCT, Pressure Point Control Tactics, training. The National Institute of Corrections visited in December to transition our ongoing support for the SIM implementation to the Jail and Justice Support Center. The Jail and Justice Support Center is a new entity that was created in partnership by a couple different federal agencies. The National Institute of Corrections and the Bureau of Justice Assistance collaborated to make a organization that's specific to jails. And they are taking over our technical support and kind of an advisory role for us over the course of the next year as we continue to fully implement the Strategic Inmate Management And that team did give us several areas for improvement, which was expected early on in our implementation. It is a significant culture shift, and it's going to take time for us to get there. Also, over the course of two thousand and twenty-four, we saw staff engagement in our Wellness and Retention Services increased fifty-nine point six percent from two thousand and twenty-three. And our improvement in retention rates saved Douglas County over a million dollars in operational costs by reducing the frequency and size of academy classes. Additionally, an unknown but significant amount of savings were generated by the decrease in overtime costs due to having fewer staffing vacancies. Staff who had been initially skeptical and dismissive of wellness initiatives have gotten on board and even joined our peer support team, and that, I believe, is an indication that our cultural shift is in process. Highlights included, over the course of twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, the prevention of a staff member's planned suicide by providing swift support and access to appropriate resources, and providing assistance to a staff member who was in an abusive relationship. The rollout of our new and improved wellness app is occurring and will be available to all of our staff members and their families at no charge. Other noteworthy items, I wanted to congratulate Deputy Director Amber Redman. She was asked by the President of the American Jail Association to fill an unexpected vacancy on AJA's National Board of Directors. She began serving in that capacity in December and will remain on the board until May, when the newly-elected board will be installed. We also had meetings with community providers for what's known as Medication for Opioid Use Disorder. This used to be called MAT, Medication-Assisted Treatment. You may probably be familiar with methadone clinics. This is an emerging issue for us. We used to have one or two people a year, and that was typically because if you had a pregnant female that came in on methadone, you had to keep them on it. We now, through federal mandates, have to continue everybody who's on this type of therapy. We have to continue that while they're in custody. We believe that that's the precursor to a mandate to put people, to start people on these medications if they have a history of opioid use disorder. So we've been meeting with community providers, not only to meet the new demands, because, like I said, we went from having one or two a year. I think last week, we had fifteen or sixteen people on these medications in the jail. And that typically, we run typically a ten to fifteen is kind of the number that we We discussed at length some obstacles to providing this for folks in Community Corrections. There are a lot of necessary regulations and strict regulations regarding the storage and administration of these medications because they are highly controlled, which presents some challenges in Community Corrections. We can send people out daily to get their dose at the clinic, but the clinics aren't open seven days a week. So then you have a storage issue, and among other, you know, among other things. So it is a work in progress, but we started the discussion so that we don't have to discriminate against people with opioid use disorder by denying them access to Community Corrections. But it is going to, it's a tough nut to crack, to be compliant with the regulations and also have the access to the medication on a daily basis. So we're working on that. It's not, we're not there as of yet. But with that, there's my report, and I stand ready for your questions.
Thank you, Director Myers. We'll go into discussion, starting with Commissioner Morgan.
Mike, thank you for a very positive report. That percentage on the homeless, seventeen percent, is that up somewhat, I think, from previous reports?
It's actually down slightly. We tend to run that seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty range, so it's essentially largely the same.
Okay. And then, I know you've had talks with ICE, and you're still in discussions, I assume, in that area also?
Yeah, so where are, I will present to the board what ICE will propose to us, and the board can, you know, take action as to whether you collectively believe that we should reengage with ICE to house detainees in the future.
And I know you and I had some discussion of the different policies and so on, and I respect how you've dealt with that situation. And when I said positive, you know, that's really good, the twenty-year low in today's world and what we see. So thank you very much, and most importantly, thank your team for the good work they do in sometimes very, very challenging situations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you for this. And congratulations on the record low.
Thank you.
That's, you know, a signal accomplishment. I can't remember at that low either, and so it's more than twenty years probably, but that's great. That's what we strive for, and kudos to you and your entire staff for helping us achieve that. The average length of stay there is twenty-five days. With, if you segregate the population into the two, more than seventy-two hours, less than seventy-two hours, a slight majority is only there for a day and a half, and the rest are there for an average of forty-nine days. Those populations, if we could break them out, the longer populations consist of people who haven't been able to bond out and are awaiting adjudication. And those populations, that population consists of waiting adjudication in district court, waiting adjudication in county court. If we could get going forward, a breakout of that, give us some kind of an idea. The whole question of bond has been discussed here over the years, and that goes to, you know, how much high bonds are costing us for, particularly in the county court population, relatively minor crimes.
You know, the, what I can tell you, you know, the felony pre-trial population, which would be in district court, is six hundred and sixty-five. And the misdemeanor pre-trial population is one hundred and eighteen, so those would be the ones in county court. Oftentimes, those are misdemeanor domestic violence cases to where there is a mandatory bond.
Right, right. And, you know, you can drill down on this to, okay, break out the violent crimes from the, from the non-violent crimes, and that's probably something that we would want to do. It seems to me, if that's consistent, that the overwhelming number of these folks are awaiting trial in district court.
Correct. That is correct, sir.
And haven't made bond. The staffing is another good news story. I don't think I've ever seen this either, where we're at a hundred percent overall, but in the front-line corrections officers, authorized three fifty-five, on hand, three fifty-nine, we're at a hundred and one percent. And it wasn't too long ago where we were struggling to get to
To eighty.
Even an adequate amount of folks, so kudos on that. I think those two numbers, the low population and the high staffing, are really accomplishments of your administration, and I want to congratulate you on that.
I've got a great team that has helped with the staffing side, and, you know, I'd like to think the work that we've done with reentry and all the programs we've developed have helped with the recidivism rates, which decreases our population on a, you know, on an ongoing basis. But there's also a much broader, you know, the police department's efforts, you know, the community's efforts through the Omaha Three-Sixty collaboration, I think, have made significant inroads in a variety of positive ways.
I appreciate that. Unfortunately, on the race demographics, we haven't made progress there. Sixty-six percent minority-majority, and the majority of those are black. Forty-four percent of the overall population is black, which is way, way under their representation in the community and has remained that way. As a matter of fact, sixty-six might be a tick-up from last time.
It's, it's been stubbornly around that two-thirds.
And I know that's not something that you have any control over, it just troubles our considerations of these. I will come back.
Oh, sounds good. We'll go to Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Do we have the recidivism rates for pre-trial yet?
No, not as of yet. So we are, we will be very shortly switching to a new data system. The first, the first software that we purchased did not deliver as promised, so we worked with dot com to select a different product. I believe that contract is about to be signed by purchasing like any moment, and so hopefully, and they, dot com is much more confident in this group that they can do the integrations with Justice and IMS in order for us to be able to push that data back into a data system where we can start reporting that out for you.
Timeline, you think we'd have, can it go back to like
Yes, it should be able to go back, yes. Because that, the data migration will take place, so yes, we should be able to go back in time with it as well, so that we can give you more detailed outcome data than what we can at the moment.
Okay. And then, I don't remember the number of folks waiting or on the GED. Refresh my memory, because I know there was a big change that kind of messed up the process for those getting the GED, made it a little bit harder, and then it was
Yeah, so, this is, this goes back several years. The, what, you know, just what people may not know is GD, GED isn't, it's synonymous with a, the alternative of getting a high school diploma, but it is, and it's the only model that's recognized in Nebraska. It's actually just a private company that does this. They, they went to a process that takes longer. There are some advantages to it in that it's more portable because everything's web-based, but the, the testing isn't as efficient or accessible as it, as it was before. So it does take a little bit of longer process. I do think they also increased the rigor of the testing, which I, you know, in theory, I don't have a problem with, but it does take people longer to achieve the GED than what it used to. The waitlist that we have, I suppose that's somewhat attributable to that. I think we've always had a waitlist. I just started reporting it more recently because I felt like, I didn't know that I've been sharing enough information with the board on the work that our educational department does and, and the challenges that they face in terms of their resources. We have a couple of very dedicated and talented staff that work in that, both in Community Corrections and in the jail, and, you know, they are, you know, they do an awful lot to reach, of outreach throughout the jail that didn't historically happen. So I think part of that waitlist growing is also they've done a lot more recruiting. They've brought this, they've brought GED to sections of the jail that we never used to consider, you know, going to maximum security units, getting those, those individuals engaged. So they, they've had a great deal of success, and, but I did, I wanted to continue to highlight the gap between the resources they have and the need that exists. and the need that exists in the jail due to that waitlist.
I'll come back, because I ran out of time.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
We were talking about the racial demographic, which remains tilted towards minority. Forty-four percent black, seventeen percent Hispanic, thirty-four percent white, and the balance of minorities as well. I don't know if there's anything that we as county officials can do that is predicated on who's arrested and brought to you and, you know, can't make bond and adjudicated. I just bring that up every time we report, because it's something the community should know that we're doing and we should probably try to remedy that. In enclosure five, you have drug and alcohol detox, one ninety-three. Are those people who come in intoxicated?
Yes.
And what's the protocol for that?
So we have two different protocols. There's an alcohol withdrawal protocol and an opioid withdrawal protocol. They both, they're medically treated differently. And I'm not the expert to tell you about what medication regimens and so forth they put them on, but it is a five-day protocol where they're managed in our infirmary until, until they're stable enough and have successfully withdrawn from the substance.
So you brought up in your closing remarks, the discussions we've had. I believe it was with UNMC on this opioid use disorder program.
Correct.
And we have partially funded that through ARPA. And the interest is to see if we can coordinate with our rather significant drug and alcohol abuse population
Correct.
Corrections. The one ninety-three are just the people who come in in a very bad state.
That's correct.
But the percentage of our population, running at about a thousand people, is much larger of people who have drug and alcohol abuse problems.
It is, and I am unable to tell you what that percentage is, because that requires, you know, a formal substance use disorder evaluation and, of everyone. And, you know, those are just, you know, you have so many, like I said, approximately half of our people get out in seventy-two hours and those things are not going to be able to be completed in that amount of time.
It's something that we might want to address going forward, because there's a very expensive population. I mean, people with those problems, certainly the hundred and ninety-three that come in in a bad state, but a larger percentage that are there for various drug and alcohol-related crimes have drug and alcohol abuse problems.
Correct.
And if those problems don't go away, they're very, very, very likely to come back after they're released.
Absolutely.
So, dealing with that in our programs going forward, perhaps collaborating with UNMC on some of theirs might be a way forward to reduce that population as well. It's difficult, given that, you know, the average length of stay is twenty-five days for the whole population, to do really in-depth drug and alcohol treatment or mental health assistance, but we will try to do what we can. I would like to note that Deputy Director of Corrections Amber Redmond's appointment to the Board of Directors of the National Organization is really an honor and a credit to her. She does a great job and I see her back there. Congratulations, Amber. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgeson.
Going back to the GED thing, do they do those on the tablets?
No, there, we have to, so one of the things we had to do when the changes came in is we had to become our own testing centers. Before this happened, actually Metro Community College would bring in proctors and they would do the tests. They were paper and pencil tests. We had to set up two online GED testing centers that the computers are specifically dedicated just, they can only connect to the GED software, so that nobody can Google the answers on their side. And so we had to set up those testing centers and we had to be our, come our own proctors. And the teacher cannot be the proctor. So we have a part-time employee who's the proctor of the tests. The instructors are not allowed in the testing center while testing is in process.
Okay. And then, two things on the health, the mental health, what's our current percentage of those?
Commissioner, that's one of the things that they're going to be adding back in to the report yet. I would, I have no reason to believe, you know, hovering around that fifty percent range. I have no reason to believe that that's changed. But we'll, I believe that number will be back in the report shortly. This is part of the transition and building new reports in the, in Wexford's electronic medical records system.
And then, you reported a few months ago about all of, I mean, we focus on mental health and we focus on substance abuse, but there was a whole slew of other things that
Yeah, medical.
Medical dealt with. And I think that was really good information. And if we could maybe get that on a more regular
Sure. Yep, I can give you a highlight of our critical cases each month, just examples of them, so you understand, you know, what our infirmary is faced with.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the corrections report? Mr. Rogers?
Mike, can you reconcile for me the, okay, like the personnel report says you have fifty vacant positions, but you're a hundred and one percent staff?
So, I, there may be some vacant positions. I
Well, is this just correctional?
I'm just focusing on, focusing on the uniformed staff member on that hundred and one percent. That's our most critical function, is to have our safety and security staff present.
So when you say a hundred and one, it's
It's just that number.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Sorry, just real quick, the next time we meet, could you give us an update on the facility construction?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on corrections report? If not, we'll conclude. Thank you, Director Myers. I'll take a motion for adjournment. Motion to adjourn Board of Corrections, made by Rogers, seconded by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We're now going to jump into Douglas County Board of Commissioners and we welcome Commissioner Fahy in his first meeting here ever. And with that, we'll jump into our roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahy. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are the minutes and claims. Items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and B, the approval of a claim submitted for payment process through Tuesday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion, a second? Motion by Morgan, seconded by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll jump into our consent agenda, items A through I. Do I have a motion, a second for discussion? Motion by Rogers, seconded by Morgan. Are there any comments or questions on consent agenda? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll jump into our recognitions and proclamations. Item A, resolution congratulating Jewel Rogers as Nebraska State Poet. And I'll pass it to Commissioner Rogers to introduce.
Vote him if you can while I read this. It says, whereas on January sixth, twenty twenty-five, Jewel Rogers of Omaha was announced by Governor Pillen as Nebraska's new state poet. And whereas Ms. Rogers will also serve as the first African-American woman in the role of Nebraska State Poet. And whereas her appointment carries a five-year term with the responsibility to act as an advocate for poetry, literacy, and literature in Nebraska. And whereas duties include giving public presentations and readings, leading workshops and discussions, providing outreach in schools, libraries, literary festivals, and other venues in communities throughout Nebraska. And where she has been a spoken word poet for more than a decade and has performed in schools, festivals, community settings, conferences, public events, and has written and performed for the city of Omaha, the University of Nebraska at Lincoln, the University of Nebraska at Omaha, and various elected officials. And whereas Ms. Rogers has also been a three-time Omaha Entertainment and Arts Award nominee for best performance, a three-time TEDx speaker, and has received numerous accolades, including being a twenty twenty-two Union of Contemporary Arts Fellow, a twenty twenty-three Andy Warhol Populist Fund grantee, and a twenty twenty-four finalist in the BlackBerry Peach Poetry Slam. And whereas to date, she may be best known for her poem titled "Humble", which speaks to the importance of understanding the value of oneself and one's contributions and of not letting outside negativity or the impulse to blend in high one's ability. And whereas this board wishes to extend their sincere congratulations in recognition of Ms. Rogers' achievement as Nebraska State Poet, now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County that this board hereby congratulates Jewel Rogers on her selection as the Nebraska State Poet and further expresses the board's best wishes in all of Ms. Rogers' future endeavors. And I move to approve.
Motion by Rogers, seconded by Borgeson. We'll jump into some discussion.
I want to say, it's hard for most, most children to live up to their parents' expectations, particularly when your father is a Heisman Trophy winner. It would be harder for a boy, but I just want to take this opportunity to rule, to recognize Jewel's efforts on her own efforts and achievements to stand out on this. And just thought that was a cool thing and wanted to make sure we could give you some public recognition on that.
I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Let me get Commissioner Kavanaugh and Borgeson, and then I'll jump to you, Ms. Rogers. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'd just like to join and congratulate you on this accomplishment. In addition to being the first African-American woman as a state poet, I believe you're the first NYU alum as a state poet. And I want to commend you on that. My oldest is an NYU Violet, and so congratulations. Your father and I were the same year in college and I admired his excellent performance for the University of Nebraska. And I know how proud he is of you and rightfully so. So congratulations on this, and I hope that you would share some of your excellent poetry with us.
In this moment?
Whenever.
Okay, okay.
Let me jump to Commissioner Borgeson.
I just want to congratulate you and thank you for the beautiful smile that you've brought to the board this morning. And, you know, in this world that is so filled with negative, it's so beautiful to see you standing before us and getting honored like this. So, thank you very much for being here, but congratulations on the honor that's been stowed upon you.
Thank you.
And our Nebraska State Poet, Ms. Rogers, do you have any comments?
Well, it feels appropriate to share a small something. I will say, this poem briefly speaks to sort of resilience and work ethic, just focus, things like that. I have been sprinting. The proverbial shirt on my back is drenched. The very real lungs in my body are waiting to exhale. I want this. I know it. I do not feel guilty anymore. I just practice. Waiting on nothing long enough to see myself leave. There will be no more apologies. This is all that I carry, this weight, this mustard seed, this Godsend, this holy multiplier. God calls me many things, tells me to believe, tells me not to get too wrapped up. I am surrounded by horizons that can't let go of me shining. And why should I stop now? Who is making the rules in this country? Who has broken the rules in this country and survived? Thank you.
All right. Ms. Rogers, you're welcome back anytime. Thank you for being here. All right, we'll jump into our committees, starting with, oh, we've got to approve the resolution. All right. We do have a motion and a second on the table, so let's approve that.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we'll jump into committees, first one being finance. First, we have item one, budget report as presented. We also have item two, the monthly fee report from the clerk also as presented. Under administrative services, we have the resolution approving amendments to County Board Rules of Order that was submitted to the board alongside an explanation on those proposed edits. It was placed under administrative services due to a lack of a better placement, but one of those rule changes is creating a new business on the agenda, which would allow for these kind of items. So, do I have a motion, a second? Motion by Morgan, seconded by Rogers. Comment or discussion? You good? You can't, yeah?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I thought maybe you could read the whole thing. I read it last night. I want to present this in person today, but I did send an email earlier for the record. You all are so busy with things that I'm not acquainted with, but I have the time to follow national topics and county topics, countywide topics. And recently, there's a lot of movement by We the People to form their own county associations. For example, we recommend a five-county association now of South Dakota, Nebraska, excuse me, counties, Lancaster, Dodge. No, I'm sorry, it is county associations. One in South Dakota, Dodge, Lancaster, Douglas, and Sarvee. To form our own associations and multiple five-county associations across this, this state and others to combat the movement by county boards to form and pay attention, pay dues, travel to, meet with, and invite testimonies by NACCO, National Association of Counties, which actually are working against the citizens, We the People. And the county boards are supposed to be subservient to We the People. You work for us. You don't work worth and for them. But a lot of your recommendations for legislation and various things are recommended to you, pushed on you by them, and even, they even go down to the state. And then, there's problems between you and the state with unfounded mandates and all this stuff we hear about.
Can we circle back to the topic, Larry, of county board rules?
The topic is on a new business, unfinished business. I'm for it, but let's call it citizen comments also and put that back into your agendas as it's supposed to be, for citizens who pay your salaries, who vote for you. Unfortunately, I can only vote for one person and there's six of you against my person, even if I can convince him. So, we will be working very hard to see that you change the rules back towards citizen-friendly government. back towards citizen-friendly government. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion and a second on table. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Under Human Resources, we do have the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as Presented. We also do have a need for Executive Session today for the purposes of contract negotiation, labor negotiation, litigation, and legal advice. Do I have a motion and a second to go to the Exec Session? Motion by Morgan. Second by France. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We will now go into Executive Session for the purposes of contract negotiation, labor negotiation, litigation, and legal advice.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Borgeson, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Garcia was absent. The meeting adjourned at ten fifty-seven AM.